Call the meeting in order, please. Call a roll.
Mr. Escalante?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The resolution reads, "Mount Clemens Community School District Board of Education Resolution Memorializing Mr. Wallace Chambers, October 16, 2019. Whereas the members of the Board of Education for Mount Clemens Community School District wish to express deepest feelings of regret over the passing of Wallace Chambers, a stalwart advocate of the Mount Clemens Community School District. Whereas during the 1968 Bather Football Year, Wallace Chambers was an integral part in leading the Bathers to an 8-0 undefeated season. Whereas Wallace graduated from Mount Clemens High School in 1969 and began his collegiate career at Eastern Kentucky University where he led the team in tackles for three straight years and was co-recipient of Eastern Kentucky University's Most Valuable Player Award his senior year. Wallace was a first-team All-Ohio Valley Conference Choice in 1972, was named to the 1972 College All-American Team selected by the Sporting News and Time Magazine. Wallace's jersey, number 78, was retired by the university as well as being a member of the university's Hall of Fame. Whereas in 1973, after a stellar collegiate career, Wally was selected as the NFL Chicago Bears' first-round draft choice, the number eight overall pick. Whereas Wallace Chambers was chosen as the Defensive Rookie of the Year following the 1973 NFL season and selected to play in Pro Bowls three times, 1973, 1975, and 1976. Wallace was named All-Pro in 1976. 1976, he was named NFL Lineman of the Year, the NFC Defensive Player of the Year 1975 and 1976. Garnered second-team All-Pro honors in 1973, 1974, and 1975. Whereas Wallace Chambers also played two years with the Tampa Bay Buccaneers, 1978, 1979, before retiring from his playing days in the NFL. Whereas upon retiring as an active player, Wallace went on to become an assistant defensive line coach at Northern Iowa, East Carolina, the New York Jets, and the Ohio Glory. Whereas based on Wally's stellar high school collegiate and professional football careers, Wallace was inducted into the Mount Clemens Athletic Hall of Fame in 2004. Whereas a huge wall poster honoring Wallace has been a permanent fixture in the Mount Clemens High School gym for all to see. Therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Education of the Mount Clemens Community School District that this resolution in memory be a tribute to the contributions of Wallace Chambers, not only at the Mount Clemens Schools but also to the many youth that looked up to him as a role model, hero, and a symbol of hope for all the lives he had a positive impact upon. And he is hereby honored in recognition for his important and valuable contributions by all Board members, staff, and students of the Mount Clemens Community School District. Signed, Earl C. Rickman III, Board President, Christine Escalante, Board Secretary." I'd like his wife and whomever else with his family to come up to the mic. We can present this to you.
I'd like to thank you all. My name is Pat. I'm Wally's wife. Thank you all for recognizing him. This means a lot. And thank you for the memorial. It's gonna be put in a special place. He has a room that's, it was a man cave, even though he said it was a lady cave because I had all his pictures but it was still decorated. He said it was still the lady cave. But this'll go into the man cave. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Suzie and I'm Wallace's sister. I'm number nine in the family. And this is something that I wrote. I said, "Wallace, growing up around him, I saw what kind of person he became. I'm proud of him, not what he accomplished, but who he is. A loving and caring brother that shared his words of wisdom. I can only tell you what I know. I remember he graduated from Mount Clemens High School and went to EK University. His life changed for the best. You know what happened next. He played for Chicago Bears and Buccaneers. I can only tell you what I know. Wallace did his thing and played his game defense. He tackled them down and made them frown. We all know the record. It showed as it flowed. I can only tell you what I know. He never forgot where he came from, a small city. No shame in his game. He represented Mount Clemens. Everybody loved him because of that. This is the case. They tell me in my face, Wallace is a kind person. It always touches my heart from the start. I will say today, his memory will never fade away. I can only tell you what I know. We are here because of what my brother have accomplished in life. I would like to thank Earl Rickman and the Board of Education for this special day, October 16, 2019, to honor Mr. Wallace Chambers known as Wally. I can only tell you what I know."
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the comments, any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you step to the microphone and state your name and address. We also ask that you be mindful that you may not receive a response to your particular inquiry tonight. And last, and not least, I ask that you address all comments to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
Hello. Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. Longtime community activist, agitator. But when I'm here today to speak to the policy, there are some allegations running around the community that the school is kicking a kid that's 11 or 12 years old because he came to school with some marijuana. I'm here to say in that he's supposed to be home schooled for a couple weeks. Now, those are allegations. I'm here to speak to the policy. Some years ago, there was a kid that lived in front of me over on Grashit. He was kicked out of school about 10, 11, 12 years old. And today, that kid is in the street doing things that he has no business doing because he could never get attached to being in school again. We have to come up with some kind of different way of discipling these children. To kick them out in school and give them, and at that time, this child was given two hours a day of homeschooling. Come on now. Two hours a day. By the time you open up a book and go through it, you know, the two hours is gone and you're not learning anything. We have to find a better, wiser way of discipline where he still, he or she still gets socialization with his peers. And I'm not saying don't discipline, but we have to find better and newer ways of discipling instead of just kicking out kids out of the school and saying that, you know, we'll give you two hours. That's, to me, it's a slap in the face that still you wanna hold on to the money from the state for that child. But we're not thinking on how that policy is impacting that child and his life going on. 11 or 12 years old, come on. You know, and if we think that it's going to get any better with this new policy with recreational marijuana and all of this other kind of stuff, we have to find some better ways of discipling. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The agenda's still open for citizens' comments. Second call, citizens' comments.
Thomas Barnes, 291 Jones Street. Now, I see all your faces, so I'm gonna tell you, I come tidying good news. I want to say that I am happy to be a Bather. My children love this school. I know that we don't hear that. I know that's not the popular narrative. That's not what people put out now. My children have been socialized in so much of a better way since they have been in this school district. My daughter has one B and five As. She came here with a great grade point average and has continued that. Since being in this school, my eighth grader has decided that she wanted to take a class that was not offered to her, so she challenged her teacher to put her in a ninth-grade algebra class which her and another girl in the school are doing online. My children have stepped it up since being here. I don't know if you were there, but I was there for the homecoming game Friday. The feeling in the stands was electric. It was something that I have not felt in this community in quite some time. The feeling from the kids, from the alumni, from people who were working, from the volunteers, from everybody there. It was just a great time to be here. Fixing the city of Mount Clemens does not start in our downtown. Fixing the city of Mount Clemens starts right here in this school with our kids. And I want to be the first to lead the charge. I have been posting kids from Mount Clemens all day. I've been getting progress reports and Power School screenshots all day. I have posted them everywhere. There are amazing students that go to this school district and they are not being highlighted enough. Those voices are not being heard. The kids that come out of Mount Clemens are great. Their character skills are impeccable. Their academic skills are great. I am tired of the negative narrative. We chose Mount Clemens. So I'll tell you that. I have two cars. I have $150,000 home. I have plenty of money in the bank. My family chose to be in this district. We did not have to be here. My kids want to be here and since being here have done great things. So I just wanna thank the Board. I wanna thank the administration. I wanna thank the teaching staff and everybody here for what we have seen since we've been here. I'm not going to judge you based on what other people tell me about you. I'm gonna judge you based on what I see myself. So thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments, sir. The agenda's still open. Citizens' comments. Last call, citizens' comments. Seeing or hearing none? Moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda, item six, consent agenda items. Under the consent agenda this evening, item A, approval of the minutes for the August 21st, 2019 meeting. Item B, approval of the minutes for the September 12th, 2019 workshop, September 18th, 2019 regular meeting, and September 24th, 2019 special meeting. Item C, approval of the minutes for the October 10th, 2019 workshop. Item D, approval of the bills for payment. Item C, we'll pull it off of the agenda. Excuse me, item E is being pulled off of the agenda. So the consent, Mr. Brewley?
I just think that we should allow the family. We really appreciate you coming tonight to be able to have us honor a great person, but there's no need for you to stay for our whole meeting. We shouldn't keep you.
Thanks, Ed. Good observation, Ed.
We appreciate your being here.
Thank you, guys.
'Cause Ed asked me, is that the beginning of the meeting? Thanks a lot, Ed. Appreciate it.
Good call, Mr. Brewley.
Thank you for that observation, Mr. Brewley. Now, there are four items under the consent agenda. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda. Somebody say something, just don't look at each other. I mean, you know.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
This whole consent agenda is a one motion?
You can, or if you wanna pull something off with the consent agenda, you just ask to pull that information off.
I'm just...
Yeah, you can move all four. Yes, yes, ma'am.
No, I just...
That's why it's a consent.
So move.
Okay, then I'll second it.
Moved by Mr. Monk to approve the consent agendas A through D, second by Mrs. Jarrett. Are there any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Mrs. Walker?
The bills for payment were gone over at the business meeting and we found everything to be in order.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
Any additional questions, comments regarding the motion on the floor?
Is E a part of this?
Oh, we pulled it.
Yeah.
I'll make sure.
Yes, sir. Any additional questions, comments, items A through D? Hearing or seeing none? Call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries.
I've been asked to move the order of the agenda. Action item 11, if we can move that up to be action item seven and move everything down after that. The action item 11 is the disciplinary hearing. So it's been requested moved up on the agenda. If there's no problems or no concerns, like Board members will.
Mr. Principal, sir, we have a disciplinary hearing for expulsion.
Yes, Mr. Duncan. Wanted to bring a disciplinary action to the Board concerning this student.
Yes, we have an issue that needs to be addressed by the Board, a recommendation, and I believe the parent has requested a closed session.
Okay. The Chair would entertain a closed session for the purpose of a disciplinary expulsion hearing. Moved by Mr. Monk, second by Dr. McFadden. Questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none? Call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. The meeting is out of the executive session at 8:23. Item seven, the 2019 audit presentation. Mrs. Davis?
Thank you.
We apologize for the length of the gentleman.
Thank you. We have Mr. Baldorman here from Raymond Robson. They have reviewed our financials for the year ending June 30. And he wants to go over and tell you the findings. So what say you?
All right. Well, I will be brief and get us through this. So we did meet with finance last, it was last week. Our audit manager, Ken Melvin, met and went over things in a bit of detail. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of different things, you know, and feel free to ask me any questions if you have any. So the financial statements, you know, the objective of our audit is to issue an opinion on the financial statements. So as a part of that, we look at internal controls, that type of thing, but that's not the overall objective of our audit. If things come to our attention during the audit, we're required to present certain things if they're significant enough, but we're not giving an opinion on your controls. The, so we did issue an unmodified opinion, which means, which is a clean audit, means your financial statements are, in our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. To get to the statements themselves, I'm just gonna, if you have the statements in front of you, just a couple of different pages I'll point out. And some of it is to distinguish the full accrual statements, which have to start on page 13. It's on page 13 and 14. I'm gonna point this out because there's, it shows a deficit, but this is not the deficit that the state cares about at all. Every school district has a deficit on the government-wide financial statements. This is full accrual financial statements like what a business has, so, or more like what a business has. So this has your long-term liabilities, those types of things displayed here. We've talked about it last year. The big thing that makes this negative is you have your pension and your retiree healthcare liability. Your proportionate share of the liability is recorded here. So that's what causes that. I wanna point that out, but that's not, overall, that's not what the state looks like, that's not what they monitor. They monitor the fund statements. So if you switch over to page 16, this is your, all of the district's funds. The general fund, the food service, special revenue fund, and the debt service fund are listed in separate columns. The total fund balance at the end of the year for the general fund was a positive $823,000. Of that, $553,000 is what's considered to be unassigned. You have $147,000 that's assigned and then some non-spendable. But overall, it is a positive fund balance. I know that was something that you were looking for this year, was to get out of that deficit. So you are out of deficit and you're at about, depending on which number you pick, you're at 4% to 6% of total general fund expenditures.
Could you repeat that? I didn't quite... Just one more time.
So, yes, you are out of deficit, so.
So am I, if I'm reading, is this saying 1,455,400? Am I reading the wrong line?
You have to read just the general fund column. That's your total fund balance of all funds.
So it's the first column, the general, 8:23, 7:29.
That's correct. So...
And could we, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, or Teresa knows the answer. So this will be the first year in how many years that we will not be in deficit?
We've been going down that road for about 15 years, so this is...
Longer than that.
I will pull that up and get us that one.
Because I think, and I think we have to thank a lot of people for this. One, first, we have to thank our employees.
Yes.
Because people should know that the employees here in the district, without their agreement and taking the largest part, wouldn't have allowed us to be out of deficit. Number one. Number two, I think our controller superintendent now has the large portion of this also because we've actually had finances that have come in on budget, whether it was deficit or now not in deficit, for the past number of years and has actually reflected our financial position. And I think without the combination of sacrifice from the employees and the administrative controls to know where we're at, we wouldn't have been successful. And so I want to thank both those parties.
Yes, agreed. Our staff has given up quite a bit over these past, at least I know for the past five years. They've sacrificed a lot and our programs have been, have somewhat suffered because there are things that we really wanted to do, but we didn't have the funds. But everybody as a district have pulled together and have made it work so that our kids wouldn't be at a total deficit. So we have to make a lot of changes and with the union leadership, with our support staff because they also took pay cuts. They used to be district staff members, but they became contracted staff. And so this district has done a lot over the past 15 years to right this ship. So thank you to all of you.
The only other thing that I had, I'm not gonna go into details. If you look at the, if you go to the back of the report is where the actual results in terms of findings, that kinda stuff. We did go over those with the finance, those findings that you have, there are a couple that are still there this year, but there's two. Last year, there were eight, so it did get narrowed down. A lot of the things were cleaned up. I mean, I know last year was a very difficult year for the district in terms of, you know, the turnover. I think we had three or four different people in finance we were dealing with over the course of the audit, and that was just over like a three-month, four-month period. So, you know, definitely things have turned around, you know, and, you know, this year's audit went much smoother and it, you know, some of that, you know, findings aren't necessarily how smooth the audit went, but it definitely was reflective. So reduction in findings and then also for us, I'd, you know, also like to, you know, say that it was a much smoother process for us this year and, you know, definitely turned around, so.
I just have a question for you. On page 71, it's the schedule of findings and question costs.
Yes.
Section three, federal awards, findings and questions. We talked about this in our workshop and you recommend that the district develop policies that are compliant with federal requirements and follow them.
Yep. So what's happening right now and what this finding is, is that, you know, when you're allocating time to any federal cost objectives, so whether it's Title I, food service or whatever, and food service is considered federal, you have to follow the guidelines. And the federal guidelines say that, and they changed. It used to be you had like two, you could either do a personnel activity report or you could do certifications if somebody was 100%. And there was a very specific way you had to do those. Well, they changed the rules several years ago that said you have to have a systematic approach that still gets you to an after-the-fact determination of what's there, but it opened it up so that you, there's a lot of different methods that you could use. And so what's happened is the method that you're using wouldn't meet the original ones, but your policies are more directed towards what those original ones were. And so the policy isn't matching up with what's currently being done and how it's being tracked. And so the recommendation that we have is, is that you need to work with, come up with a practice that you're gonna follow and then make sure that the policies that the Board has adopted lines up with what's actually being done to track those costs and allocate those. So it's one of those where we're finding, I'm actually finding this at a lot of my districts where they have practices. You look at it, you say, well, it makes, it kinda makes sense what you're doing, but you need to get it down in writing so that the policies match up with how it's being done so that the documentation flows. Because otherwise, you know, we look at the federal guidelines and you have to follow what the federal guidelines say and everything, it becomes a finding at that point, so.
Thank you.
The other, the other letter that's there, I'm not gonna...
The only other thing that I had, I'm not going to go into details. If you look at the, if you go to the back of the report is where the actual results in terms of findings, that kind of stuff. We did go over those with, with the finance. Those findings that you have, there are a couple that are still there this year, but there's two. Last year, there were eight, so it did get narrowed down. A lot of the things were cleaned up. I mean, I know last year was a very difficult year for the district. In terms of, you know, the turnover, I think we had three or four different people in finance we were dealing with over the course of the audit, and that was just over like a three-month, four-month period. So, you know, definitely things have turned around, you know. And, you know, this year's audit went, went much smoother. And it, you know, some of that, you know, findings aren't necessarily how smooth the audit went, but it definitely was reflective. So reduction in findings. And then also for us, I'd, you know, also like to, you know, say that it was a much smoother process for us this year, and, you know, definitely turned, turned around. So.
I just have a question for you. On page 71, it's the schedule of findings and question costs.
Yes.
Section three, federal awards, findings and questions. We, we talked about this in our workshop, and you recommend that, that the district develop policies that are compliant with federal requirements and follow them.
Yep. So, so what's happening right now, and what this finding is, is that, you know, when you're allocating time to any, any federal cost objectives, so whether it's Title I, food service or whatever, and food service is considered federal, you have to, you have to follow the guidelines. And the federal guidelines say that, and they changed. It used to be you had like two, you had, could either do a personnel activity report, or you could do certifications if somebody was 100%. And there was a very specific way you had to do those. Well, they changed the rules several years ago that said you have to have a systematic approach that still gets you to an after-the-fact determination of what's there. But it opened it up so that you, there's a lot of different methods that you could use. And so what's happened is the method that you're using wouldn't meet the original ones, but your policies are more directed towards what those original ones were. And so the policy isn't matching up with what's currently being done and how it's being tracked. And so the recommendation that we, that we have is, is that you need to work with, come up with a, a practice that you're going to follow, and then make sure that the policies that the board has adopted lines up with what's actually being done to track those costs and allocate those. So it's one of those where we're finding, I'm actually finding this at a lot of my districts, where they have practices. You look at it, you say, well, it makes, it kind of makes sense what you're doing. But you need to get it down in writing so that the policies match up with how you, how, how it's being done so that the documentation flows. Because otherwise, you know, we, we look at the federal guidelines, and you have to follow what the federal guidelines say and, and everything. It becomes a finding at that point. So.
Thank you.
The other, the other letter that's there, I'm not going to go into. There's one, I will point you to the attachment. And this is just because I like to point out what's either has changed or what is changing. So on the attachment A, there's a list of the new sta, upcoming standards and what's changing. And the one that applies next year. It's A1, so it's after the initial part. I'm sorry. I'm in the separate letter. So there's an attachment to that letter that is A1. And in this, it lists all the different, the new and upcoming GASB standards. So the one that's coming up is on fiduciary activities. Next year, there will be a change in how student act, student activities in your private, private purpose trusts are being presented. Those have been what they call fiduciary funds. The, the student activities were in an agency fund. Now those are shifting to where, you know, and most districts are this way. I'm finding that everybody has it this way because you have some kind of administrative involvement in those funds. The new definition says they can't be in those types of funds anymore. They've got to be in a special revenue fund, basically. So most districts are going to special revenue funds. And the thing that I point out there is that we're running into more and more is there's legal implications with that, that there's some things that sometimes were okay when they were going through student activities and through an agency fund, that now that they're in a, in a governmental fund type, the way the laws are written in the state, then different rules may apply. And so it's just being aware of those things. Most of our, a lot of our district, there's things that have come up over time where I know the major firms, law firms have put out some letters as guidance, but there may be some things that you end up having to ask your attorneys about that, that might fall in that questionable realm where you can consult with them. I get a lot of questions, and honestly, I'm an accountant. I'm an auditor, and I'm not an attorney, so that, so I know some of the stuff, obviously. But when you start getting into the depths of some of the stuff, there may be some times where you have to consult with your attorneys on that. So. But other than that, I didn't have anything else that I specifically wanted to cover. But if there's any questions or anything, anybody else wants to delve into, I'd be happy to do so.
Any questions?
Well, I was going to ask a question about what kind of funds and stuff, and some of those things pertain to A1, but now I can't because you're not an attorney.
I mean, you can, you can try. I mean, I know.
No, no, that's okay. I don't want to. I think we have to do something else for that.
No questions? Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Good service. Glad we're moving in the right direction. And you confirmed it.
It's official.
Right. The chair would entertain a motion to receive the audit report.
So move.
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Walker. Questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none. Call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. I'mma take the liberty of moving an agenda item, item number 14. It's an informational item. The gentleman's been sitting around a while. Item, the debt refinancing. Mrs. Davis?
Thank you. And tonight, we have Mr. RJ Naughton. He is from PFM, and he's our financial advisor. And we had discussed last month about refinancing some of our bonds from the 2009 year. And after 10 years, you couldn't refinance to get a lower interest rate. And RJ is here to go over that process and let the community know how that's going to play out. So with that, Mr. RJ.
Thank you. Thanks again for having me out here. I look, I look forward to coming out here whenever I, there's an opportunity for the school district to discuss your bond projects. And it wasn't that long ago that the district had refinancing back in 2017. And at that time, it was a refinancing of a bond and also a refinancing of the school bond loan fund loan. Because interest rates are so low right now, it is possible for the school district to refinance the school bond loan fund loan again. And I'll describe how that works. Is this mic working? Okay. The PowerPoint is not.
There it is. There it is.
All right. So our role as financial advisor is to assist the district with your bond projects and let, let the administrators be aware of alternatives for refinancings and funding capital projects. And the district has several bond issues outstanding, also a loan with Department of Treasury. And this first slide refers to your taxable value growth. And this is very important because when we project your future taxable value growth for purposes of filings with the state, we have to use what's called the statutory taxable value projection. And that is, that's dependent on your five-year historical average and your 20-year historical average. And as you can see, I have boxed up in your five-year historical average and your 20-year historical average. And this current year, the change in taxable value is just over 4%. And we're adding back exempt personal property that was carved out of taxable value a few years ago. And, and we are allowed to add that back because the school district receives the equivalent of lost debt levy tax receipts from the state for that part of the tax base. And, and so the, the growth has been very good, over 4% growth this year, nearly 3.9, nearly 4% growth last year, and the five-year average, 2.88%. And next year, 1.2% is falling off the five-year average. So it's quite possible the five-year average is going to go up next year. Now, the 20-year average is 1.47%. And of course, we had the recession years in the middle that you could see. And in the year falling off the five-year average next year is 4.17. It may be similar next year, so maybe your 20-year average won't change as much. So this is one factor in determining your projected stay in the school bond loan fund and where your millage could, could go in the future years. This next schedule is your millage projection before the refinancing. And on the left, we have the adjusted bond payments, which, that the debt levy tax receipts, along with school bond loan fund borrowing, has to cover each year. And then we have the projected growth of your tax base according to that five-year historical average and 20-year historical average. We have a column called Mills Needed All Debt. That's the equivalent millage if the district were to levy for just your bond payments, which is fairly high. It's 27 mills in that first year, 20, nearly that in the second year. And the district's participating in the school bond loan fund program. And, and so the district's levying 11.8 mills and borrowing the difference that is needed to cover your bond payments from the state. And, and many states are in the school bond loan fund program, like Mount Clemens Schools. That is a loan with the state at a variable rate of interest. And I'm going to go into detail on that in the next few slides. The district was levying 9.42 mills at the time of your last new money bond issue. But because of the recession and because of rules that changed with how the school bond loan fund program operates, the debt millage was ratcheted up from 9.42 mills to 11.6 mills in 2014 and 13 mills in 2015, 11.9 mills in 2016, and 11.8 mills currently. It, it is possible that the debt millage could come down, and that's, that's reviewed each year. If the debt millage doesn't come down as much or stays the same, then that means the district doesn't have to borrow as much from the state and repays at a faster pace. And that results in interest cost savings with your loan with the state. This millage projection, it's dependent on several factors. One is your taxable value growth, and the other is the interest rate on the school bond loan fund loan. This projection has that 3.5%. At the time of the annual review of millage, that set of documents that we do in July or August, that's sent to Treasury, that's one of those new requirements from 2012, to prove that your stay in the school bond loan fund is not longer than your year of mandatory loan repayment, which is the year 2037. So each year, this millage projection has to be updated with the new changes in taxable value and sent to Department of Treasury. And we can use at that time, an interest rate for the school bond loan fund loan going forward that is not lower than the current interest rate at that time. So we've been using 3.5%. At the time of a new money bond issue, we have to use 5% interest rate on the school bond loan fund loan. So that's a little more conservative, and that, that's good at the time of a new money bond issue. So the taxable value growth and the school bond loan fund interest rate are the two big factors that determine your projected stay in the school bond loan fund. Based on this projection, before the school bond loan fund refinancing, the projected stay in the school bond loan funds to the year 2030, ahead of the mandatory loan repayment date in 2037, and the millage in that last year of loan repayment in 2030, which will be the 2029 levy, is 9.8 mills. So that's before the school bond loan fund loan refunding. I'm going to briefly go over some of the rules for school bond loan fund participants. And there is a minimum amount of millage to be levied while there's a loan outstanding. And that, it's the computed millage. And for Mount Clemens Schools, it's 9.42 mills. But the district's currently levying 11.8 mills. So there's a possibility that that millage could come down in, in the, in the next few years. But if it, if it stays at where it's at, or it doesn't come down quite as much as it could, that saves money on school bond loan fund loan interest costs. Yes, sir?
Just, just to clarify, in cases, some of the viewers. So we're talking about the debt millage. We're not talking about operational millage. We're talking about the debt millage. So if a person looked at their tax bill, they would see it under school debt. It's not under school operational. And the 9.42 mills is what traditionally we were required to do. But then the legislature, a number of years ago, six years ago, is the one that is requiring the 11.80. That's not our requirement as a school district, but that's a requirement that the legislature put on all districts. And what we're attempting to do tonight is to lower the amount by borrowing at a lower interest rate, which will pay off the bonds sooner than later. But this is not an increase in any millage level.
That, that is correct. So if, if the district could reduce the millage in, in future years, then it, it wouldn't be go down below the 9.42. But that's dependent on the five-year historical average and 20-year historical average each year. If the millage does not go down as much, then that could result in increased bonding capacity, whether it's at a no-mill increase or a millage increase in the future while there's a loan outstanding. So there, there may be a good chance the district could have a bond issue between now and 2030. And there's a, a chance it could be a no-mill increase bond issue. And, and part of that depends on if the district had a choice to reduce the millage, how much that millage is reduced in the next several years. So there are a lot of factors. And I know if you're not into this and looking at it every day, it could be, could seem confusing. And, and there are about 130 school districts in Michigan participating in the school bond loan fund program. Many of them had to ratchet up their millage during the recession years. And the, this, here's the key part, though. The school bond loan fund interest rate is a variable interest rate with a minimum interest rate of 3% and a current interest rate that was just lowered last week to 3.27%. Before last week, it was 3.41%. But it cannot go down below, by law, cannot go down below 3%. And as I mentioned, at the time of a new money bond issue, we project going forward 5% interest rate on the school bond loan fund loan. For savings purposes, we use 3.5% interest rate on the school bond loan fund loan going forward. And in my opinion, that's conservative because I believe the average interest rate in the school bond loan fund between now and 2030 will probably be closer to 4%. So moving right along, we have the mandatory loan repayment date. And, and that's established as six years after your last bond payment at the time of your first school bond loan fund loan borrowing. So while you have a loan outstanding, that mandatory loan repayment date, which is the longest you could be in the school bond loan fund program for, is the year 2037. And, and that date remains fixed until 30 days after that loan's been repaid completely. The maximum levy a district could, could levy on the school bond loan fund loan is 13 mills, and the district did do that for at least one year. So moving on to the benefit of refinancing the school bond loan fund loan, and that's what we're looking into currently because interest rates are so low right now. Just like we did in 2017, we had refinanced the loan at that time. At that time, when we had refinanced the loan, we refinanced it with only a four-year bond term. So we had to compress that loan amount that we had refunded with just a four-year bond term. And that caused the district to go right back into the school bond loan fund. Now, interest rates are so low, and the yield curve, you know, you go out further in time, you have a higher yields, but it's not upward sloping that, that much. It's, it's kind of a shallow yield curve right now. And, and what I'm getting at is with, with this next school bond loan fund refinancing, the bond term may be 10 and a half years, maybe 11 and a half years long. And in general, the, the longer the bond term on the school bond loan fund refunding, the greater the savings. So this, this chart here does a good job of summarizing the school bond loan fund refunding. It compares the before and the after. And on the left side, we have the bond payments increasing because we're replacing the current loan with a new bond issue. And so the bond payments are increasing by 10.6 million. If we skip the middle box and move out right on to the school bond loan fund bond, borrowing and repayments, the net repayments over borrowings are projected to go down by a greater amount, by 11 and a half million. And so that difference, 841,000, is the projected savings. That is replacing a loan with a minimum interest rate of 3% with a fixed-rate bond issue with an interest rate less than 3%. And that's at current interest rates with a 10 and a half-year bond term. So this is very healthy savings, and that's 841,000, but it's contingent on future taxable value growth and also the future interest rate on the school bond loan fund loan. Because, now if we look at the middle column, is the comparison of before and after millage. And the millage after, you're staying the school bond loan funds to the same year, 2030, but the millage in that year is 8.43 compared to 9.8. So that savings is really realized in that last year. And this projection assumes that the millage continues at 11.8. It is possible the millage could come down a little bit between now and then. And if, if so, the amount that the millage could come down would be more due to. And if, if so, the amount that the millage could come down would be more due to the school bond loan fund refunding. So the present value savings, because most of that savings occurs in that later year, is five hundred and seventy-five thousand. And the loan amount being refinanced is approximately eight million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand. We like to take the present value savings divided by the loan amount, and that percent PV savings is six point five-five percent of the loan amount, which in my opinion is very healthy. Sometimes we set a minimum level of savings. In fact, that bond authorizing resolution did, as one of the parameters, set it at one and a half percent. You're going to clear well over one and a half. And as rates stay as low as they are now, we'll be closer to six and a half percent PV savings. So the advantages here are the millage in your last year of loan repayment could be lower. Your, uh, or the millage decrease that could happen over the next several years could be lower than it would be otherwise. So any school districts that had just refinanced their school bond loan fund loan in 2016 or 2017 are refinancing their loans again, even though the bond issue that refinanced your loan previously is still outstanding. And we've done many of these. PFM does, does work for a lot of school districts, and, and we're refinancing maybe, maybe three or, three or four of these each, each week for the last several weeks.
What year bond is, or several year bonds are refinanced, or is it 2017?
In, in 2017, we had refinanced a 2007 refunding bond, which had refunded a building and site bond, but offhand, I don't remember the year, but it was, it may have been your last new money bond issue. Was that in the early two thousands? Yes. Uh, but offhand, I, I don't know when the last new money bond issue was for the district.
Just to reemphasize that, what we're doing is dealing with past voted bond issues. So we're not, we're taking what our debt is now from past voter-approved bond issues. We're not suggesting a new one. And we're trying to refinance it like you would do a home so that we're out of debt sooner and we're making lower payments and the millage rate could go down quicker at the end. It won't be right now, but, because your benefit comes at the end of your loan, not at the beginning or the middle of your loan mostly.
That, that is correct. We're refinancing loans that are attributed to your outstanding bond issues. A- and another benefit is if the school district were to have another bond issue between now and the year 2030, that the no-mil increase bond issue would be greater because of this school bond loan fund refunding. So there, there are several benefits depending on which one you, you focus on. But in all, it is interest cost savings because that variable rate loan has a minimum interest rate of three percent and it's being paid down with a fixed-rate bond issue with the interest rate less than three percent.
You're saying currently we have a variable interest rate and you're going to a fixed interest rate?
That is correct.
And you're saying that the bond is scheduled to, uh, 2030, let's cut off that bond.
That's the projected last, uh, payment to the school bond loan fund loan. And your, your last bond payment is in the year 2031.
That's going to be right now for the bond we have now?
That is correct. So if we look at the first box, your bond payments go out to the year 2031, but your projected stay in the school bond loan fund goes out to the year 2030.
And even with the refinancing to a fixed interest rate, it's still projected to end 2031?
Uh, the, yes, that is correct.
Um, I have a question. You said, uh, the, um, this taxable value, in that this is all based on the taxable value going up? What happens if something, I mean, what happens then? When, if the taxable value doesn't go up?
So this projection is based on the current statutory taxable value projection.
Right.
And if the taxable value growth is better than this, then your borrowings will be less and repayments will be better. And that has the effect of reducing the savings. So another, I'm going to repeat that. So if your, if your actual taxable value growth between now and like 2030 is better than the statutory taxable value projection, then your borrowings from the school bond loan fund would be less and repayments would be better, which has the effect of reducing the savings. However, because we're using three and a half percent tax, three and a half percent interest rate on the school bond loan fund loan, if the actual interest rate, the average interest rate on the school bond loan fund loan between now and 2030 is greater than three and a half percent, that has the effect of increasing the savings.
Okay, I get it.
So, a- and the inverse is true there, too.
Okay.
So sometimes I'm asked to run this projection not at the statutory requirements that the Department of Treasury requires, but at maybe a more plausible projection. And maybe I, I use a straight, uh, two percent growth for taxable value. And maybe I use a four percent interest rate on the school bond loan fund loan. Well, well, that, those two things might balance out and you may end up in the same place.
Okay. Is the, is going to the, uh, fixed rate, you said that we could have a lower interest rate than the three percent, which is the adjustable? You can't go lower than the adjustable? Okay, so the adjustable rate is only on adjustable loans, right?
That, that is correct. But by doing the school bond loan fund refunding, the district is still going to participate in the school bond loan fund. In fact, the district would be borrowing in May. In fact, we could possibly have more savings if we were to wait and do this after May. But the big uncertainty there is where interest rates are going to be at that time. So if we back up, whoops, back up too far, to here, your borrowing in May is projected to be seven and a half million dollars. And, and that's going to be similar with or without the school bond loan fund refunding. And you're still going to have bond payments and you're still going to participate in the school bond loan fund, but we are drawing down your current loan with the state.
Oh, okay.
So just like we did in 2017, we lower the loan and you go right back into it.
And because we can't raise enough, um, loans, that's why we have to borrow from the state to make sure we make our debt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments, clarifications?
I, I will add that, uh, the few, next few steps in preparing for this bond issue are that, uh, we're going to have a credit rating call real soon. And, and this time in twenty, I'm getting off on a tangent, excuse me.
It's a good tangent.
It is, it is a very good tangent. Because the bonds have the state program rating, which is currently double A. When we did this in 2017, we chose not to have your underlying rating reviewed. And they, they kept it at triple B plus. But because things are better now, we're going to have your underlying credit reviewed. And your demographics are better, your finances are better, and we're hoping for a better underlying rating. If, in the, they often move it up a notch at a time, so, uh, maybe they'll give us an A minus rating. And we'll know that. Uh, so after that credit rating, then we, we have that official statement, which is practically done. And then we have a pricing date. And, uh, and that's happening, uh, in November thirteenth. And then a few weeks after that is when the delivery of the bonds happens, and that's when the loans repaid. And, and I apologize if I went on a tangent, but that was worth noting.
That was really good.
So the result is we'll have lower costs?
That's correct because the interest rate on this refinancing bond is dependent on the state's credit rating and the, your underlying credit rating as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, I appreciate you. Once again, that confirms what we thought, we're doing a better job financially. He just confirmed it again, and we're making the right steps to manage our monies. Thank you, sir. Action item number eight, personnel. Prove new hires for 2019, 2020 employment. Mrs. Davis.
Thank you. Yes, we, um, one of our CI, um, teachers, um, moved, uh, what, uh, left the district and left an opening for a middle school CI, um, teacher. And we were happy to say we were able to find one. And her name is Karen Rose Drum. And she, um, will, actually she started, was able to start on October seventh, tentatively, um, awaiting approval by the board. So I'm asking that the board will approve her hire as a, um, cognitive impaired teacher for the middle school.
Moved by Dr. McFadden. Support by Mrs. Escalante. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor, Mr. Brewley?
So this is a replacement?
Yes.
Uh, not an increase in numbers?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions, comments?
This was discussed mildly at the, um, our last committee meeting, but it wasn't truly in stone. But we was aware that this is taking place.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, call and roll, please.
McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item nine, professional development slash training.
There's a couple of, um, members that like to attend training and just wanted to, um, make sure that we discussed it here at the board table to, uh, get it approved. And I believe, I forgot which two, Dr. McFadden was one?
There's more than two.
There's four.
Oh, it's four?
There's at least four.
Okay, so you guys can speak. But that's what that's for.
Okay, the, the, item nine is, um, approval for professional development for board members. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item nine. Moved by Mr. Monk. Seconded by Dr. McFadden to approve the professional development training. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing is seen none, call and roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item nine, tax sheltered annuity third-party provider. Mrs. Davis.
Thank you. Is this is, um, a tax sheltered annuity company, GLP, that, um, processes the annuities that employees, um, choose to participate in? This company does provide this service to the majority of the districts in the state. And I had brought it to you before, but, um, legal had also suggested that we get a copy of their letter ruling from IRS, and so we do have that in possession. So, um, I would ask that the board approve this third party to continue to provide, um, the services to our employees. We, right now, we have about fifteen people who are actually participating in this. And they have been, this company has been providing the service to the district for at least the last twelve years. So just ask that, um, they are allowed to continue to provide the service. And it's nothing, um, on our end that we're, we're just a conduit between the employee and the, um, tax sheltered annuity companies. So the employee requests us to deduct the money out of their paycheck and we send the money electronically to, um, TSA. To the TSA.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item ten, the tax sheltered annuity third-party provider.
I move to, um, accept the GLP or tax, uh, annuity third-party provider.
It's been moved by Mrs. Jarrett to approve the tax sheltered annuity third-party provider as presented. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
This is a company we've been doing business with for the last twelve years. All we're doing is making sure our employees have somebody that legally will hold their money and we don't have to be the ones that's responsible for any mishaps.
Correct.
And it's a voluntary program on behalf of?
It is a voluntary program. Mr. Rickman?
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing is seen none, call and roll, please.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. Monk?
I'm sorry.
And I'm sitting right next, I'm sitting right here, Joe, right in your face.
Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Monk.
She must be hiding.
Item twelve, plan to promote slash celebrate deficit elimination. Mrs. Davis.
Thank you. Yes, we had, um, been discussing what ifs, uh, situations, um, when we are able to, uh, get past, uh, our deficit. And as you see, we have a little over five hundred thousand dollars that we can use, the other, um, monies are being, uh, designated. Some is paying, uh, bills. But, uh, we wanted to do something elaborate to celebrate this, um, milestone. And one was, um, we would do some type of advertising and we would, um, be going around the district to do, um, some film clips and, you know, and share our great news. So we're going to put several things together. Also, Mr. Brewley had some ideas too, so wanted to, um, entertain some of those and make sure that we're able to move forward with some of these ideas.
So, is that something that, I know we talked about, you know, several different things. Are you looking for a motion to approve something, a plan? Or is there an existing plan? Or is it, um, are we, you know, still developing it?
It's a combination. So, um, one is that we do want to advertise. So we're looking at a couple of companies to come in and do some, um, taping, as well as our, our staff working with, um, the cable company, to incorporate some of the, um, things that we have going on in the district. So it wa, it's going to be a combination, um, throughout the year of different items that we can come up with. And I know, like I said, I know Mr. Brewley had asked, um, oh, yes?
Oh, yeah. Buying were like just better use of our cable facilities and, and other kinds of things. I think if it's going to be, but they were generally non-cost items. If we're going to have cost before we go to any company, we should see a, a proposal or something like that. And I'm not advocating that we do. I just think we need to better re, reuse, use our resources and, and things like that. So, um, I would not want to, we should have a written document before we approve something. I'm not suggesting we should approve something in, without the plan.
What committee are we sending this to?
It was finance. That's the most.
So I guess we can, we can not vote on anything.
Need a minute and say, send? Send to the committee? Send to committee? To the finance committee or sporadic?
Well, I mean, if we, there's a motion to send it to the committee, that, that motion overrides any other motion. So if there's a motion to send that to committee, then we'll vote to send it back to committee, and then it become out of committee with, you know, whatever comes out of.
Would this be something that's tabled until we have that?
I would not suggest tabling. I'd rather, it'd be easier to send it to the committee, send it back to the committee.
I move to send it to the finance committee.
I'll support that one.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to, to send item 12, plans to promote slash celebrate deficit elimination. Send that to, send it back to the finance committee. And it was seconded by?
Teresa.
Mrs. Jarrett. Moved by Dr. McFadden, seconded by Mrs. Jarrett. Any questions, concerns, comments on the motion on the floor to send back to committee? Hearing is seen none. Call or roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 13, establish special meeting date. This goes back to what we were talking about at the workshop. I think we were talking about establishing a meeting to come up with the components of the superintendent's evaluations and what we needed to see. So, and I think the consensus with the group was that since we have a work session scheduled for the Thursday prior to the board meeting, that we wanted to consider changing that work session to a special board meeting.
What was that date?
14th.
November 14th.
Mr. Brewley?
I thought we were going to do it earlier, because the 14th, I know I will be out of town. But, and then we were going to proceed to December to do the actual, but we had discussed an earlier date. And Ms. Jarrett had left, so we were talking to her to see what she was available. That was my recollection. Do you have?
I have done a special meeting on December 12th.
That's for the superintendent's, that's for the, okay, that's to do the superintendent's evaluation. Okay.
Actual.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I got it twisted up.
We could have a committee meeting that everyone doesn't have to attend earlier. And what was the date we were talking about that?
Well, that date was before you was leaving.
Yeah, right.
I don't know if we ever, do they ever actually throw a number date out?
It's from the workshop.
Because I have.
I don't know what the minutes of the workshop would have it.
That should be here.
There might have some discussion, you know, discussion in terms of, we talked about different dates maybe in there. Because we, in the workshops, we couldn't establish and voting on anything. So it would just been recommendations for dates. So we're looking for a date to.
What day you leaving?
6th.
6th. I know we said not the 5th because of election day, remember?
Right.
I thought we talked about something in the late, later part of October.
I thought we did too.
I don't have anything for October.
We'll have the calendars in this, this.
That's the day before Halloween, right?
Yep.
Mrs. Jarrett, are you available Wednesday, the 23rd?
Oh, shh. At what time?
That's a Wednesday sometime in the evening.
Yeah. No, actually, I am not. The primary major.
What day are you leaving?
Thursdays are, no, not that.
Did we mention the 30th?
It's usually, I'm looking at the 24th or the 31st is always.
How does the 30th look, 30th look for everybody?
The 30th looks good for me.
Any complex 30th? October 30th?
That works for me.
I'm gonna make it happen regardless. So 30th, I'm, I'm ready. Mr. Monk, you ready to fire?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I'm supposed to have surgery that day, but I'm, I may be okay to come later on in the evening. But in the event that I wasn't feeling well, could I?
What is it, 29th?
Could I come in by phone?
Yeah.
Is that allowed? Okay, okay.
You want to be talking all drugged up on the phone?
No, I'll try not to.
What you, what you saying?
Must be laughing all the time.
Okay, so it looks like that's going to be the day.
No, we said we got to get a motion.
I make a motion to have the, unless this is a special?
Workshop.
Workshop, workshop on October 30th.
And a special meeting on December 12th.
And a special meeting on December 12th.
Yep.
It's been moved by Ms. Jarrett to establish October 30th, 2019, as a, as a special, as a workshop date. We have a time?
The workshop could be 6:30 or 6?
We're trying to, 6:30?
6:30.
They won't throw that in?
6:30 for both things.
Okay. It's been moved, moved by Ms. Jarrett to establish October 30th, 2019, 6:30 PM as a board work session, and to establish December 12th, 2019, 6:30 PM as a special board meeting. Do you second that? Did anybody second that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Brewley. Any questions? Com, Mr. Monk?
I would suggest that we all, I actually have already emailed Earl my, my, my request, and it may be the same request as, as my fellow board members, but I suggest that we all kind of sit down, each individual, and think about what we want to see and what we want to request of the superintendent to bring to the December meeting. That way, when we get here at that meeting, it's not a long process. We're kind of brainstorming. And I, and I suggest we funnel those through Earl, so he can kind of compile, because what I may be asking, Dr. McFadden may be asking the same thing. So, you know, he can kind of put them all together and say, okay, everybody wants to see this. So, you know, that's, that's what I suggest. That way, it kind of moves it, and we're not here all night.
Makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Just for that's clarity.
Yes, sir.
November the 30th, I mean, October 30th will be a Wednesday.
Okay.
And December 12th will be a Thursday. Okay. Make sure, you know, I think Wednesday, Wednesday, because I think that sometimes.
Got you.
I'm that type of guy. I might walk right foot and left foot, who knows? All right, so Wednesday and Thursday.
I hope you walk like that.
You know, I gotta step on my crack twice. I step on my right foot, I gotta step on my left foot. All right, December 12th.
Yes.
6:30.
So October 30th, 6:30 workshop, December 12th, 6:30, a special meeting.
And I have one more thing. If I have it, or I can do it, or a matter of superintendent, if you have it, if you could email everybody a blank super, you know, superintendent evaluation, so everybody, so we're looking at the same thing. Everybody's looking at the same thing, so.
Any other discussion, questions, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? And the motion on the floor is to establish October 30th, 6:30 as a board workshop session, and to establish December 12th, 6:30 PM as a special board meeting. Hearing is seen none. Call or roll, please.
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. As item 15, is any representative here?
I know, they had to leave, so.
Information, yes, sir, yes, sir, Mr. Monk?
Policies were seconded. Did we remove that, or was that removed from the agenda?
Yeah, because we didn't, remember, we didn't have them last.
Oh, those should have automatically, because we already went up for first reading. So those should have automatically came in for second reading. It automatically, once you send it in first, it automatically come to that second unless there's some major change. So it automatically. So for the future, if that, even though we didn't meet, it'll automatically come to for a second reading.
Okay. Okay, well, that, that was the only reason I took it off, because since that last meeting.
Okay, we'll just move it to the next meeting. Okay, that's fine. All right.
It was the last minute thing, so I apologize. I should have called you first.
Yep. I was all ready to read my, ready to go. Right, Doc?
Yes, ready to go. Ready to do it. If my, so item number 16, September 2019 cash flow report. Are there any questions? The finance committee or the superintendent?
We did present it at the finance committee, and we do have some money in the bank. And we're very pleased to say that next month you'll get your regular financial reports. But it was just a cash flow report this last time.
Any questions? Item 17, open purchase order listing. Any questions? Item 18, personnel report.
And we already did, Captain.
Item 19, contract listings. Any questions, concerns?
Robert and I will be looking at the trash disposal in the next couple of weeks, because that will be up next year. And so we'll be getting together a RFP for that.
Item 20, district calendar. Any questions on the district calendar?
We've been trying to make sure we update you guys.
Reflected the updates, you know, those quarterly meetings. And also the quarterly reports for the audit. That's also should be added to the calendar.
Yes. And I do have my time sheets for what the auditor was talking about as far as looking at all the time allocation quarterly.
All right. No questions. Item 21, superintendent's comments.
Thank you. I do want to say thank you so much to the finance department for this last audit. Linda was new this year, and she just joined us in January, and she was able to come in and help our department get through our reporting. So she's been a huge help. Joy and Kelly, this is their first year in, in these roles, and they have really stepped up to the plate, and they've done some great things in the finance department. So I'd like to say thank you to those three ladies for helping us have not the eight findings that we had last year, but we only had two. And they do have to find something. So we were pleased with the items that they had come up with, with the two items. So it was a really good, clean audit. A special thank you to all of the staff for the sacrifices that have been made these past several years. And there's no way that one person would be able to get us out of deficit. But we all worked together, and we all did what we needed to do to make sure that we were out of the red. And it was a lot of hard work, hard decisions financially, and in some cases spiritually, just some of the, you know, the emotions that run through trying to make sure, you know, we do the right thing for our students, for our district, and indeed for our individual families. So thank you so much to the Mount Clemens Community School families, staff and family. Okay. There is a Macomb Reads Festival that's coming up on November the 9th, and we will make sure that we put this on our website. But the whole county is participating in this, meaning that all schools, all districts in the county will be participating, and it will be held at the ISD. And they kick, it's going to be from 11 to 3. And a number of districts are providing bus services from the individual districts to the ISD. So we will be looking at that to see if, you know, we will be able to work with Trinity, so that our families would be able to join in this. There are lots of free activities, so there will be more to come. We have celebrity readers, free children's books. There are going to be guest authors there, a huge book fair, costume characters. So this is exciting timing. Mark Halkler will also be a part of this activity. So as I said, more to come, but it's called Macomb Reads Festival, and this will be the first of several to come in the future. Also, I want to point out that Mount Clemens High School received a certificate of accreditation, and we are so pleased that we did this through Advanced Ed. And it is so that our students that want to go into higher education, when the different universities and colleges look at us, they will see that our high school is accredited. So thank you so much to the staff for making sure that we did jump through all the hoops, that we were doing what we needed to do as a school, as a high school, to get that distinction. Also, Seminole will be having a Thanksgiving lunch, and that's going to be on November 21st. And they, that will, you will hear more about that one, but they've asked that I mention that to you guys tonight, and then I'll say it at each of the meetings that, when we do get together. It will be on November the 21st, and it will be from 10:30 until noon. Staff and visitors are welcome. It's going to be $5 each for the adults, but the students, of course, will receive it free. It's going to be oven roasted sliced turkey, mashed potatoes and gravy with cornbread stuffing, buttered green beans, cranberry relish, and warm Greek rolls with a homemade pumpkin bar as your dessert. So again, more of that will be coming, so you guys will be getting one of these invitations. So they wanted to make sure that you guys knew about that. We are, Mr. Chitelle asked me to pass on to you guys that we do have trunk or treat coming October the 26th, and it will be from 11:30 to 3. And he has challenged the board to have a trunk ready to come out and share with the kids. I know a number of our kids will be participating. And I believe Mr. Tommy Burns will have his group of kids down there participating as well. And we always provide lots of candy to go along with the activity. So just remember on October the 26th, trunk or treating, it is on a Saturday. We are still looking for a couple of teachers. We, we need math. We just got our music teacher, we believe. So keeping our fingers crossed on that one. Those are great candidates that came out, and we have one that really stood out, so we're hoping that we'll be able to hire them. And I believe we're still looking for an elementary gym teacher. So that is, I'm wishing everybody a wonderful weekend. And again, thank you so much to the staff for, and this community, and especially this board for making those tough decisions for this, getting us out of deficit. Because if it had not been for you, it would not have been possible. So thank you to each of you. And happy bosses day to all of you. Even though your food is cold back there, we have food for you. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent. Ah, let's see. Committee reports. Business committee. Mrs. Walker?
We met Tuesday of last week, and we went over everything as we usually do, bills for payment, purchase orders, everything, and found everything to be in order.
All right. Any questions, other chair? Thank you. Policy committee, Mr. Monk? Policy committee, Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Mr. President, we did not have a meeting, um, but I was asked that all of my uh, committee members, for maybe two minutes after the meeting, we get together and put together a date. Or we do just go for a regular meeting, however y'all wanna have it, so. I know we got some, and also we have a new packet um, of policy that just came in, so we'll be bringing a slew of first reading policies to the next meeting.
Did everybody else get an email the other day about, from Neola, about a new policy? I, I'll just send it to you, 'cause I got an email from Neola a couple, three days ago, and I can't wrap my mind around what the policy was about, but uh.
From Neola?
Yeah.
There is a brand new one.
It's from Neola or it was from s- somebody, M A S B or somebody, but I know Neola, you know, name was mentioned in it, and it was about a policy.
Okay.
Policy change, I'll just try to admit.
Alright, I'll check it, I usually go on to the uh, M A S B um, policy website, so I'll, I'll check it out.
And I did get something from them, but it was just talking about their new process, about how they'll be um, how we'll be using their website going forward, does that not sound like the same thing?
Maybe I got it all mixed up, you know? Alright. Curriculum Personnel Committee, Dr. McFadden.
Yes, sir. October eighth, we met at one P M, I forwarded some notes to everybody's email, I believe everybody got them.
Yes, got it, yeah.
Got it.
Uh, if any big questions on that, let me know, but we went over some of the stuff at the workshop, nothing new, just some um, meat for the potatoes. I mean, there's nothing new to this, we talked about the workshop, we knew what's going on. We're gonna have an audit of our curriculum, district-wide audit, take, um, date to be done, to be determined, um, Dr. uh, Ms. Jensen's gonna be the lead on that. We got a couple pilot processes with curriculum materials for E L A for K through five, we're looking at My View Wonders. We're moving forward a small pilot on a um, sixth to eighth grade math um, curriculum materials, that's gonna be helped out with that by the M I S D. Um, everything else is just, it is what it is, um, we are being serious with the curriculum, and we are, you know, doing audits and tests and a few samples and things like that. So hopefully by the end of this year, we have a good grasp on it.
Any questions on the chair?
Got one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and that, this had came up at our policy committee, well, at a workshop, doing policy, and I asked Ms. Jensen, and I don't know if she brought this back up to you guys, um, but that trend data for district and building demographics, did she bring that up, or is that gonna be presented again with updated information?
Assistant Superintendent?
What, the demographics, say that one more time?
Yeah, demographics, that the.
Oh, yes, yeah, there, um, she is pulling that, all of that information together for now too, so yeah.
Alright, and is it all, is it, is it everything gonna be filled out this time, 'cause there was some information left out?
Yes, we, um, everything that we do have right now, that's what we're gonna, um, make sure we put in there. Cause I think the other piece that, along with that, that you guys were asking about, um, was also comparing the um, letter grades to the testing.
Well, we, um, when Ms. Jensen was at the meeting, we talked about getting the data to the board on a monthly basis.
Right.
But we only can provide the data that we can, we can get.
Well, I don't think, I mean, firstly, I think this should come to us maybe four times a year, maybe every.
Yeah, when they do the testing.
Not every month, 'cause it's a lot of information to get every month, but maybe four times a year at the checkpoints, that, and that's something that we can go over, you know what I'm saying, I think this is a very valuable piece of uh, data.
We all agree.
That we all should be looking at.
We can have come in a workshop, we can have sent it to workshop.
Yeah, sent it to workshop, yeah. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Monk, appreciate you.
Yep.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Mr. Linnenberg, Community Coalition.
Yes, sir, we do have our drug take back day, sorry, next Saturday twenty-sixth from ten to two at the Wilson Gym. So if you have any expired, unused, or otherwise unneeded prescription drugs, liquids, anything like that, please bring them over, we'll take care of them for you. As always, our goal is to raise twenty pounds, and make sure they stay out of our waterways and out of our hands of our children. Uh, the trunk and train, I'm glad that was brought up, we also have the spook tag there on the same day, and those are opportunities for community service for our high school students. Both of the Optimist Club with the D D A, there's plenty of volunteer opportunities for young people to get some community service hours. The city clerk is looking for high school students sixteen and up to work as the election volunteers. Slight training involved, it's a good opportunity, we are off school that day, and if they are seventeen and want to participate in the primary and presidential election next year, great experience and community service, so that's an opportunity, so if you wanna get that word out there as well. And then, of course, the Santa Claus Parade in November is a great opportunity for some more community service for our young people, and that's on Saturday the twenty-third. So my goal is to make sure that all these kids get their ten hours a year, and there's no scramble in their senior year for community service. We put out there, they know what they can do to get their hours in and breeze through that time and uh, get through, they do their, do their requirements, so. That is my, that is my drum, I'll be beating for the next couple of years.
Any questions on Mr. Linnenberg? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Legislative, there, there's a meeting next Tuesday. Anything that they're talking about at the superintendent's meeting about legislation?
No, not that we haven't already talked about.
Athletic ad hoc committee.
This is another of those topics we talked about at the workshop, and um, we all know that we just came from an audit, and um, the superintendent's gonna put the dates together, we spoke about that, and we're going, like I said, we don't wanna overbear what we're doing now. We're gonna put some dates together, we're gonna ask those questions that was asked of me at the workshop, we'll make sure we get the answers back to you if something's possible. But between the um, audit, superintendent evaluation, stuff like that, we're gonna make sure I get it all wrapped up for the end of the year. If any, any additional questions, concerns, or comments, email me before I make sure I ask those questions.
Any questions on the chair?
Thank you, sir. Educational Foundation, we have not had a meeting in six, seven months. Want to um, digress and go back to action item agenda, item number eleven. The determination of the disciplinary hearing. Recommendation is expulsion, chair would entertain a motion relative to the recommendation. Okay, we spent almost an hour in the back.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk. There's a second.
Support.
Second, Mrs. Jarrett. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing seemed none, call roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Board comments. We'll start with Mrs. Jarrett. I'm sorry, oh.
We did have one other one, um, the one student um, until further investigation at the elementary building.
But I thought that was pulled, I thought it was pulled because it's pending in- investigation, so there's no action for us to take then.
Right, but it just said that it was uh, indefinite, so I didn't know if I needed to let you guys know in turn, so just leave it, since it says indefinite. I wasn't sure, okay.
It's not ready to be voted on, so.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
Mrs. Jarrett.
As we go into the cooler weather, I want everybody to remember this, because uh, uh, we had uh, we discussed this earlier, that we're gonna be thankful for this weather when it gets to January. Um, although, winter's kinda cool though, especially around holidays. Um, I'm very happy with the progress of the school and all the great things we're doing, and I see a real, a huge change. I attended the football um, on Friday night, I'm not a big sports fan, but it was very cool to see so many people out there and to support our teams, that was really excellent. And that whole thing, once a bay there, always a bay there, hoo ya on that. I uh, hope everyone will be um, safe during uh, the upcoming um, Halloween, if you do uh, go out and uh, into, I think the trunk or treats are gonna be good, that's uh, I dress up for that, so you gotta figure out who I am while I'm there. Uh, so, I'm looking forward to uh, some, you know, fall fun and fabulous weather. I wish y'all a great um, uh, next few, um, oh my goodness, I'm falling apart here, 'cause I had all this in my head. Forgot to write it down. But be optimistic, do good at school, make it, uh, make every day count, and enjoy what you do and how you do it.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarrett. Mr. Monk?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I came to this district when T C Wallace was the superintendent. I'm still here with Ms. Teresa Davis. I've lived, learned, cried, angry sometimes, coached, mentored, volunteered, supported. And I say that to say this, I've never seen this district in a better position today than I've ever seen it since I first came to this district. Ms. Davis, I commend you, and your staff, and your personnel, and the whole district, because this was a total team effort.
Yes, yes.
And I want to congratulate this district, and I want to say congratulations and thank you to my board members. I know before I got on the board, I didn't understand what was happening on the board, because I was on the other side. Now that I'm on this side, I do understand that there are some tough decisions that, that has to be made. Some people don't understand because they don't understand. Some people like because they like. But in the final analysis, any decisions are always made for the betterment for the kids. For the kids, it's about the kids. So, I'm feeling good right now, I might not be, if I could, I'd jump on top of this table, but it might break, so that's a whole.
Or you might break something.
Or, and that might send us back in deficit, so you know, I won't do that. But, you know, we are out of deficit, um, I think I said this before, when I first came on this board, I think we were just north of three mil, in the negative. Um, and now we're in the positive. Um, but now the true work starts.
Yes.
Because we need to stay in the positive. And we need not to get over exuberant in seeing that black number, because, you know, we got so used to seeing that red number. But that, that black number's a good number, it's always a good number. So, Ms. Davis, thank you, thank you for your tenacity, thank you for your expertise as, as our CFO, um, for your guidance, um, you are the best CFO we've ever had, and I, and we've been through a lot of them. We've been through a lot of them. Um, but it's, like I say, it was a group thing, the teachers, oh my God, teachers just sacrificed so much.
Yes.
But not, I mean, they sacrificed a lot, but everybody sacrificed, but the teachers really sacrificed. But you know what, this is the turning table, so I commend you and your staff, I commend the everybody in the district, from the janitors to the, the maintenance guys, to, to everybody. Um, this feels good. I'm trying to tell you, this feels good. I feel good. We out of debt. And those are my comments. Thanks, sir. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Monk.
Ms. Escal- Mrs. Escalante?
I mean, I think you said it all, I'm not gonna sing, but I'm happy to, I mean, it's a, it's a big accomplishment for the district. When I came on the board, you guys already had a plan in place, and you guys were, some, most of you were already knee deep in that plan, and so I've had the opportunity to, to be here and come in as you guys had already started to take on the difficult work, so I don't feel like I've done as much as all of you have, but I've learned so much from all of you, and I've been able to jump on and, and support and, and go alongside of those efforts, and it, it does feel good. You know, if we don't have debt and we continue to stay out of debt, we're gonna be able to offer even more, and, and it is about the kids, and um, that's going to directly benefit them and the staff, and it's a collaborative effort, so we have a lot to be proud about, we have a lot to be thankful for, and I think you said it perfectly, so. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Bruley?
Whether or not you have a student here, you will benefit from what is happening here. The fact that we will no longer be on that list will make the community smile more and be better. So we have to build back, and we're trying to do that, whether or not you have a student here. Our focus is the students we have, and we have brought back music, we have brought back gym, we have brought back those programs, and we do want to expand, but as Mr. Monk said, we have to be realistic and careful about what we can do, because we never wanna be in the situation that we were in before. We have to figure out ways, and I must say, education in Michigan is underfunded. And the state government is the principal party responsible for underfunding education. We need the state and the legislature in particular to step up. It is very difficult, we don't have the money, when you compare it from today to twenty years ago, to spend on students that they had twenty years ago. We are doing much more with less. And yet our kids need more. So we're gonna work on trying to get them there, provide more opportunity, and the first step was the finances. We're very concerned about the academics, we want people to be able to succeed. And we just have to realize that sometimes life is not a straight line. And each student is gonna divert here and there, but we're gonna try and keep them all on a path so that they can succeed.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Mrs. Walker? Excuse me, Mr. Bruley, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Bruley, excuse me.
You already know that was my brother from another month.
I know you get us too confused.
I had no popcorn to do this, that's the nine thirty. Mrs. Walker?
Well, Tuesday night, I was with a group of middle school, quite a few middle schoolers, and they were not from our district, and I was talking to some of the boys, and I said, where are you going to high school, and one of the boys who, like I said, was not from this district, said, you know, um, I think I'm gonna look at Mount Clemens, cause you know, I heard it's a really good place. And I said, you know what, I heard that too. So that says it all. Whether his parents are talking, whatever, that's a really good thing.
Yes.
So those are my comments because I get squirrely when it's late, so I'm just gonna end with that.
I just called people out the wrong name. But thank you, Mrs. Walker. Dr. McFadden?
Did you go already?
Yes.
Okay. Well, first thing is, yeah, we glad we're in the black. But because we're in the black, doesn't mean there's no room for improvement. Cause we still have a lot more things to do. And, um, our head is just a little bit above water, but it's very easy for us to slip under and go back where we, where we started from. And the good thing about being this board is every year we improve, we got a little bit better, got a little bit better from some mistakes, and got a little bit better. But still, we still lacking a lot of resources. Lot of resources that can do a lot of good things. And we building on that. We looking for more resources, we trying to find whatever we can do to make things best. But, you know, but that being the case, sometimes we don't have the resources to attend everything and everybody. But we doing the best of what we got. Are we being good stewards of our finances? We working on our curriculum. We trying to provide, you know, special needs for special people. So we wanna keep trying, we gonna try to get better, we gonna try to continue to do what we need to do. But just remember, even if we have people that's listening, and I ask board members and everybody else, we still on a thin, thin, thin layer of ice. So if we don't be careful, we can fall back right where we was at in the last two or three years. So we gonna continue the course, and, but, and once we get to a point where we need to be, we gonna reward those that sacrifice. Until then, just hang with us. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Majority of this meeting tonight, I viewed it as success stories. We started with the auditor. We all around this table had a gut feeling that we had, you know, we were in the, in the black, we were out of, out of deficit. But the figures that were confirmed by the auditor made it all come to light, that we have come a long way. And that's a success story. There are several districts across the state that have been in debt. There are several districts that are still in debt. But what we did, we had a plan, and everybody has a plan. I've been on this board since Old Yeller was a pup. I'm trying to reflect back when the last time I recall that we were not in deficit. And I'm thinking between nineteen ninety-nine and maybe two thousand and one was the last time I can, you know, just trying to pull together and rewind some tapes. Last time that I can recall that we were not in a deficit, and that was, uh, during Dr. Wallace's tenure. And he left in twenty, twenty-two thousand. So having a plan is one thing, but sticking to that plan, when you get all kind of pressures from all sides, we need this, we need that, I want this, I want that. But the board stuck to a plan. We had to tell some people, no, you can't get that, no, you can't have that. We're, we've got a plan, we're focused on a goal, and if we deviate from this plan, uh, we won't ever reach our goal. So all, all my colleagues have talked about a number of people that were responsible for it. It was a team effort. Twenty, twenty-ten, I was the president of National School Boys Association. And my theme was teamwork, dream work. Uh, it, it's more than the seven of us at this table, or eight of us at the table. But the whole community, the whole, uh, Mount Clemens Community School District community, um, played a big role in this. So we have a success story that we need to share. Our story, there are other districts that can learn, uh, from some things about what we did here in Mount Clemens. Because it wasn't easy. Making hard decisions, uh, was, was, is never easy. You have people that are mad at you because you made decisions that they quite didn't understand or they didn't agree with. But they, like Mr. Monk alluded to, when you're not on, when you're on the other side of the table, you have a different approach to things than you, than you get when you're on this side of the table. And, and so there's some people who just, they just had to be mad at us because we had to adhere and stick to our plan. And by adhering and sticking to their plan and making some folks not happy with us at times, that we are here today with almost a half a million dollar in the, in the black. As we alluded to, we can't be nearly, willy-nilly about how we distribute those funds. We have a lot of work that we need to do, but we don't have the money yet. So we have to, again, establish a plan and stick to that plan, uh, until we can get to where, where we're going. So tremendous kudos and accolades goes out to the, everyone in the entire district, including parents for having faith and confidence in us to continue to send their students here to be educated, uh, in the Mount Clemens Community School District. So everybody owes a big, big thank you and a job well done. Mr. Bruley had talked about that we, the district school, public schools in Michigan are, have been drastically underfunded. I can remember maybe eight, ten years ago, when the state gave us a projection of what we were gonna get per pupil. And we made our, we built our budget based on what the state had promised us. And then in September or October, we get the state, we get, and we get reduced what, what the state had promised us. So we automatically went into a deficit because we had built our budget based on what the state originally had told us. So, you know, it, it's, it's not just us at the local that's doing it, but all this stuff is coming down, uh, from Lansing, and it leads me into vote. You have to vote. Not just, even though it's not a presidential election year, there are other things. There are local elections, there are, there are state elections. You have to be consistent and vote every time there's an election because it has an impact on you, on either positive or negative impact, depending on the outcome of that vote. And everybody's over eighteen, that's a, that's a civic responsibility, um, that you should take serious and register and actually go to the polls and vote. If you don't vote, then you don't have the right to complain about anything. If you do vote, then go your way. Hey, you can at least, you say, hey, I tried to, I, I cast my vote, so I think I can complain about it. But voting is a very important thing. Homecoming. Homecoming twenty nineteen. Congratulations to the queen, Sarah Hilliard, and the king, Vermont Cannon. This was the largest crowd that I've seen at a Mount Clemens football game. And I can't even remember back, I mean, twenty, twenty-five years, uh, that it's been, since I've seen that type of crowd at a Mount Clemens homecoming game. We have homecoming every year. We have alumnus every year that are here. But a winning team. I, I, I can't help but, I believe that the winning team is what generated the interest and enthusiasm to bring those people into the stands. Last year, we had a home, we had a homecoming. It wasn't, it wasn't the crowd that we had this year. So I, I just say kudos to Mr. Barnes and his crew. They, they did some fundraising, they've got some sponsors. They provided to the first hundred people or so that came through to the game. A T-shirt, uh, and it honored William Sonny Ford, a nineteen sixty-five graduate of Mount Clemens High School. That was, uh, city commissioner. And it also honored Wallace Chambers, uh, nineteen seventy, nineteen sixty-nine, uh, graduate of Mount Clemens High School. So kudos out to Mr. Barnes. If I knew anybody else that was responsible and helped you, I, I would name those, but I don't, so, but you know who they are. But, you know, pass those kudos on, on to us because, um, that, that's one of those things that, you know, doesn't think like, like it's a big thing, but it's a big thing. Uh, you, you honored bathers and you gave people something free. And who doesn't like something free? And those, those T-shirts go, those T-shirts are gonna be around for a while. There are gonna be people wearing those T-shirts from Homecoming twenty nineteen. It was, although we lost the game. It was that, our homecoming this year was a huge, huge, huge success. And, uh, I, I, I'm just glad to see, um, that state of course, you know, things go, they, they seem to come around. And, um, like Dr. McFadden, our head is above water. So we're breathing air now and not, not choking on water. So there's something that we should all be genuinely proud about, and we're heading in the right direction. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support.
Seconded by Dr. McFadden. Call roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Ladies adjourned at eight oh three in the P M. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Excuse me, ten oh three. Ten oh three.